Hello, everybody. I'm Adrienne Mollenkamp with the League of Women Voters of Athens County. We thank you for joining us tonight for this candidate forum for the Athens City Council at-large Democratic primary. We hope this forum will provide you with important information for the upcoming election. There are four candidates running for three Democratic slots in the November general election. Those candidates are Beth Clodfelter, Ari Faber, Paul Isherwood, and Jessica Thompson. And we appreciate all of them for making the time to participate in our event tonight. Please make sure that you have your voting plan for this May's election. The last day to register to vote or to change your address or update your information is April 7th. May 8th, not May 8th, April 8th is the first day of early voting, and it is a day when absentee ballots will start being sent out. Then Election Day is May 6th. In addition to these candidate events, the League publishes a voter guide where you can look up written answers from candidates to questions that will be available online in early April at vote411.org. And there will also be printed copies available at the Athens Public Library. The League of Women Voters is dedicating to expanding public awareness and participation in elections and governmental issues. We do not support or oppose candidates or parties. You can visit us on the web at athensleagueofwomensvoters.org to learn more about what we do or how to become a member. We're open to anyone who is at least 16 years old. And if you appreciate our candidate events and voter guides, please consider making a donation, which you can do online at that website. So, thank you, and I am going to turn this over to our moderator for the evening, Catherine Jellison.
Thanks, Adrienne. Can everyone hear me? Okay, very good. Well, good evening to our candidates, to our in-person audience, and for those of you watching online. I will begin tonight by explaining the forum procedures, which each candidate has agreed to in advance. Tonight's forum will include an opening statement from each candidate, a question from each of the media representatives present, questions by the public, and a closing statement from each candidate. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing statement, and one and a half minutes to answer each question. There will be no rebuttals. The order for speaking will rotate, and I will indicate who speaks first. The candidates can see our timekeeper, Seal Weldon, who will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, 10 seconds remaining, and when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking, I will say thank you and move on to the next speaker. Candidates are invited to share their qualifications and experience and to talk about their plans and proposals. Candidates are asked to focus on topics relevant to the question asked and to avoid personal attacks and raising issues that are unrelated to the office being sought. If they go outside these guidelines, I may stop the forum and remind them of these guidelines. Now to the audience members, please turn off your cell phones. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that, at the end of our time together, after all their closing statements this evening, you may clap for all candidates, if you wish. We receive questions by email prior to tonight's forum. We are also taking questions from our in-person audience. You are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the paper provided on your chairs. Questions must be answerable by all candidates and must apply to issues or qualifications for the office that they are running for. Raise your hand if you'd like another piece of paper or to have your question collected, and please write legibly. All questions are reviewed by a League panel. Here to my left, the panel removes any questions that, one, cannot be answered by all candidates; two, are statements rather than questions; or, three, are duplicates of other questions. We will use as many questions as time allows, striving to cover a variety of topics. So, I must warn you, we may not have time to use every submitted question. We will certainly try to ask as many as possible. I've asked the candidates, all of whom I know pretty well, if they're comfortable with my referring to them by their first names, and they said they are, so. We will begin our opening statements with Ari.
My name is Ari Faber, and I'm running for Athens City Council because I believe in a town that works for everyone: students, families, and lifelong residents alike. Athens is a special place, but we face real issues that need real leadership. Housing in Athens is in a crisis, and I know this firsthand. In 2015, when I was outed to my parents, I was kicked out and came to Athens Couch Surfing with my cousins. When I was finally able to sign a lease, I moved into a house that had mold in the basement and a leaking hot water heater. I became incredibly sick, and to this day still deal with some of the effects of that mold exposure. But my story isn't unique. So many tenants in Athens are forced to live in unsafe and unhealthy conditions. It's not just a housing problem, it is a public health crisis. We need stronger protections for tenants and real accountability for landlords. We must invest in affordable housing so that nobody is priced out of their community. In addition to housing, we need to invest in our infrastructure, but we need to do so in the right way. The construction on West Union and the Lostro project have caused incredible difficulties for both residents and businesses, and a lot of the frustration could have been avoided with better communication. As your city council representative, I will strive for better community input and transparency so that nobody feels like they are being left in the dark. I've spent my career bringing people together to address tough problems, be it passing issues through city council or working on issues such as the Emergency Warming Center. I hope to earn your vote on May 6th.
Thank you, Ari. Next, we'll hear from Beth.
Good evening. Hi. First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this event. Not every council or every county, excuse me, is fortunate enough to have such effective and engaged members as we have in Athens. I don't know if people realize this, but there are counties where they don't hold anything like this, and we have great ones, so thank you very much. I'd also like to thank those of you who've taken the time to come out in person for this event, and those of you who are watching from home. I've believed for a long time that anytime somebody makes an effort to get to hear the people who are offering to represent them in person and ask them questions, it makes our local democracy a little bit stronger. And right now, in the United States, with all of these situations, we need the most active and strong democracy possible in our town. So, I am really seriously engaged in city council, and I am the only city council member who has not missed a single meeting. And that is because I think it's really important to show up and participate and just to be there as often as possible. I won't say that I will never miss a meeting, ever, ever, but I haven't yet, and our term started in January 2024. I also consider it an honor to serve on Athens City Council. I'm in my second term right now, running for reelection to my third term, and I would be very, very honored to have the opportunity to serve you again and would work hard to serve and represent you to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Paul.
Hello, everyone. I also want to extend my thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. When I first got the email saying that this event would be happening, I can tell you, I was very excited. As a former social studies teacher, and Professor Jellison will know, as a former TA of hers, I am well-versed in the history of American politics and American history, and I know how important participation is in our democracy. And so I also want to thank the other candidates for being here today. I think it's really crucial that we, in our city, where we hold democracy so dear and so precious, are presenting an opportunity for the voters of our city to actually make a choice. And I would encourage others who support that to take the opportunity and step forward and put your name on a ballot in this time that we're facing, a particularly challenging time for democracy. I think it's really important that people step forward and do that. So, I've lived in Athens in a number of different guises. I've been an international student, I've been a renter, I've been a homeowner, I'm a parent, a youth sports coach, and so I bring a lot of different perspectives to the city council and to, and I believe can talk about a lot of different experiences in our city. I've been very proud of the last year and a half. I've been a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, so I've come across a lot of the challenges that the city is facing in terms of its zoning. I'm a member of the local soccer board. I've lived on the South Side, the West Side, and the East Side, and so I think as an at-large representative, I would be very happy to have your vote, and I think I can represent a broad swathe of opinion across the city.
And finally, we'll hear from Jessica.
Hello. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters. I've come to many of these over the years, and I appreciate all of the work and effort they put into this. I know it's not easy to do, and I know that finding volunteers for these things is a real challenge. I have been a almost 30-year resident of Athens. I came as a student. Like my fellow candidates, I have a lot of varied participation perspectives over the years. I've had a student perspective, a young adult, small business perspective of 25 years, parent through all ages now of all of our local schools, and I've had a variety of past organization experiences. I've been on nonprofit boards in the past, seven years of PTO, three years of the Athens Uptown Business Association chair. I'm a current chair of the Dairy Barn Arts Center and a member of the Athens County Foundation Board. I think all of these experiences have really allowed me to meet a variety of people in our area, not just in Athens City, but in the surrounding Athens area, interact with a lot of different perspectives, and really get to view things from a lot of different angles. I see my time on city council this past term as really learning the ropes to an extent that you don't really get to do till you're in it, but also in getting to see things that I've wondered about or had thoughts about for the last 20, 30 years come into play and get to fall back on that experience. There are a lot of challenging topics that come up in council, and I'm glad that we are able to stand up and speak for people and our constituents in our town, and especially those who may not have the voice that they can use as openly as they choose. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done in the last year. I think we could do a lot of good in the future, and we're really looking at a lot of different things, from affordable housing through zoning changes, code changes, and I'm really excited to continue that work.
Thank you, candidates, for those opening statements. We'll now move to the question and answer portion of the forum. As noted previously, candidates have one and a half minutes to answer each question, and candidates, if you need to repeat a question, just ask me to do so. We're going to begin, however, without me asking the questions, but instead, members of the media. Our first question, and we will begin with Beth answering, then move to Paul, Jessica, and Ari. Our first question is from Taylor Orcutt of the Athens Messenger.
Thank you. Hello. Some of you might have seen my byline recently, so it's nice to actually meet you in person. Multiple of you have talked about affordable housing, which is a key issue in Athens as just rates of unhousing increase, enrollment in OU continues to increase. And so, this year specifically, the community has, with kind of the controversy of Spire Developments, quote-unquote, Palmroye Landing, have really voiced that they want more of a say, more of a voice in what's happening with our housing developments in the area. So, how would you guys support that request from our community and create those opportunities for their input? Thank you.
Well, you've hit on a very tough issue that came before council. I don't know if everybody is aware of this, but there was a proposed affordable housing development on Palmroye Road that, well, yeah, we really need affordable housing, but the people who live in that neighborhood on the South Side did not want it, and almost 500 of them either signed petitions or came and spoke in council, asking us to turn it down. In the end, the developer withdrew that proposed development, possibly because that neighborhood was so well organized and strong and spoke out so much. So, opportunities to talk to them, I mean, representatives of the group that was really organizing, the people on the South Side, came to the committee meeting about it, to the first reading, second reading, and third reading. They sent us emails, they called us, so I think they had a lot of opportunities to do that. But I'm really hoping that another developer will come along. And that site had utilities connected, and it was, I don't know, we had a developer interested in investing millions of dollars to create affordable housing in Athens. I hope we get another such opportunity sooner rather than later, because there are a lot of people in Athens who would really love, I think, to pay no more than 30% of their income toward housing, which was the proposal for that development. And I think, well, I hope to say more about housing later. That is also a priority of mine.
Paul.
Yeah, I think it was, you know, I totally understand the need for greater public input on some of these projects, but I'm a huge supporter of using tools like Lytech to make sure that we have access to more affordable housing. We have a big challenge in southeast Ohio in attracting developers to build developments on that scale. We have, you know, Ari and myself are both on the, and co-create, housing initiative, local community housing initiative, and one of the things I sort of learned from that is that we need to tackle housing affordability at a lot of different levels. The most, the people with the biggest need are the people at the low-income level, and so we really do need to do that. And I would say to people who are unsure about that, remember that if we create affordable housing at that lower-income level, it will reduce pressure on the overall housing market and free up housing stock and help make more access to other housing for people across the economic range. And that's really, really important, because as Beth said, we have a lot of people who would like to have more affordable housing at different levels, and it's really, really crucial to grow our city. So, I would see my role on council would be helping to make Athens a place where developers and other initiatives like that would be a place where we'd be welcome as well.
Jessica's next.
Thank you. I think regard to public input is one of the challenges we do face. Communication between the city, between residents, is very cumbersome, is very, excuse me, difficult right now, which in my opinion is because we have so many various forms of communication available, but everyone chooses a different method, so finding what most people are going to find here and see consistently is a challenge. In this one, I have actually been In this one, I have actually been talking with our city planner, some various city directors, just asking how certain things work, how we could change them, specifically things like a Title 41. It's a two-week awareness. It usually takes, you know, 30 to 40 days total, but how can we maybe look at down the line, improving that, changing that? From the Spire Development situation specifically, there was discussion of putting the sign out that would normally happen for a Title 41 awareness, doing that earlier so that people can see it ahead of time. I did meet with residents from the south side to talk about concerns. I talked, listened to them as they came and emailed, really tried to be available for responses for anything someone wants to know and to go and find the answer if they, you know, if I don't know it. I'm a big fan of due diligence and really putting the effort in and I would just continue to do that. But I think we can improve some of our communication as a city on the whole.
And Ari.
One of the first things I would do to make sure that residents felt like I was accessible and they were able to get their questions answered and their voices heard is starting to host drop-in hours where residents are able to meet with me during set hours that would be published and they would know where to find me and when, making me easily accessible to people. I think also when it comes to just general communication about things throughout the city, we have an app already. Why aren't we using it more effectively to communicate with people? Can we send push notifications about city council meetings, about road closures, things of that nature? I would also make sure that we could also use Nixle, for example, that we're already currently using for some issues, like a boil order occasionally, but not for other issues such as road closures and whatnot, that would be very easy to send out a mass text that residents are able to sign up for if they would like. Again, I think everyone touched on how important the Palmroye Landing project was in the hope that something similar may come through. I think one of the key things that we can be doing in the meantime is outreach to people that, that had been organizing on the south side to talk through their concerns. It's something that we had to do with people that live near the Sunset Motel prior to even announcing that we were going to be purchasing the Sunset Shelter.
Thank you, everyone. The next media question comes from HG Biggs of W O U B. And Paul will be the first one to answer that question.
Hey, all. So my question is in regards to businesses that have been speaking out against road and sidewalk closures, saying that the city is not working with them. How will you work with the community to create plans that address these needs and the needs of the city without inadvertently hurting local businesses?
Yeah, I know that's been a huge issue and been going on for, not just recently, it's been a topic of concern. I know the city has a regular plan that they take, you know, every year they identify streets that they need to close for pretty large-scale maintenance. So we had Union Street, we, earlier last year, we also, before that, Stimson. So I do, one of the things I think that, and I know this came up at a recent city council meeting, was an idea of creating a small business or a local business committee that in order for local business leaders to provide feedback directly to both city officials and city council prior to that planning being done, so they can give feedback on whatever the plans are for that kind of development. I think it's really critical that the city engages in infrastructure, maintenance and upkeep. I mean, I think that is absolutely critical, but I think we can do a better job of making sure that it's less disruptive to local businesses. I think it's really critical, we can't have a situation where we have that kind of development putting local businesses in the threat of that they feel that they may need to close. But I think communication is the key on that and for planning. And I know that, you know, the mayor and Andy Stone are open to that kind of communication. And so I think it's something that could easily be put in place moving forward.
Jessica is next to address that question.
So this is one I've had plenty of personal experience with. I've had a business on Court Street that we have owned for 25 years. So we were one of the first streets in 1999 to get sidewalks replaced in front of our business. The first block did it over three separate phases. And that said, it's, it is disruptive. It is scary to be in as a business, as a business owner. I understand all of the emotions that people were going through. I do agree that communication on how it's going to get done, the start dates, the end dates and how it's going would be really key in keeping people more informed and feeling a little bit more secure as to where things are going. I did not, in this past year, receive a lot of emails till people showed up to council and I really would encourage the public to reach out. Anyone who's being affected, if you reach out immediately or just early on, we can really start changing the process while we're doing it, or at least addressing it better. It's a lot harder halfway through to go backwards and fix anything. I know that fixing infrastructure that's 30 to 40 years old, where you find things that maybe 40 years ago, they didn't mark down on a plan and now you're trying to figure out what this pipe does, is a challenge. And I think communicating that better from the city's standpoint would help all of us. And that's something that I have addressed and talked with, you know, our service safety director, just how we can fix that and move on in the future. But I just, I would think we all agree up here that communication would be a better, make for a better situation. Thank you.
Ari's next.
In addition to better communication and again utilizing things like the City of Athens apps or Nixle, I think we can also reach out to the local businesses that we know would be affected from the time that these projects are planned, to ask them, what needs are you going to have during the time that this project is planned for, so that we can start putting in place a plan to make sure that people know they are still able to get to these businesses, these businesses are still open, in ways that we are able to try to help people get in the door so that no one is losing their business, their livelihoods. Yeah, really communication, often communication and transparency is what it boils down to at the end of the day. And I think that putting the onus on ourselves of reaching out to these businesses rather than expecting them to reach out after they're already experiencing problems, we can get ahead of the curve and address them before they're a problem.
Well, I think all of my fellow candidates have already given part of my answer, so that's okay. But it was really unfortunate that, we had a couple of really unfortunate situations in the past year. When Union Street was completely closed, we had businesses go out of business on that street and ones that managed to hang on by their fingernails really suffered. I was, we were made aware of one business, I probably shouldn't name it, but three months in a row, they lost over $100,000 a month over their usual sales. They managed to stay open, they had to cut one job, but if it had lasted much longer with being, having both directions of traffic closed, they would have gone out of business. Secondly, the sidewalk that that LOSTRO building closed, the former Follet's Bookstore, I believe three businesses on that side of the street have gone out of business. I thought that was just tragic and, you know, really those decisions about how construction projects go are the administration. But we in council, I am determined that if I'm reelected to council, I will try to keep the pressure on the city administration to not completely close traffic, to not completely close a sidewalk without having an alternative walkway and to just do everything we can to not inadvertently hurt our small local businesses, which contribute so much to the character of Athens while we're making needed infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. Our next media question is from Carrie Johnson of the Athens County Independent. And Jessica will be the first person to answer this question.
Okay, cool. So thanks, everybody. Yeah, I want to ask, my question kind of couples what they both touched on, but I'm curious, like with your roles on council, how do you view our approach, you know, bringing in developers and out-of-town developers and business and, you know, other types of industry? And then also, how do you, coupled with that, like sustaining local businesses and maintaining, you know, those kind of institutions that a lot of people would say make Athens special? You know, do you see, how do you view the balance there and, you know, does one thing take priority over the other?
So how do we find a balance between, this is a really challenging area for Athens. Athens is very diverse and I often think that we are at odds at ourself because when you survey citizens, you get very different answers depending on who you're talking to regarding whether they want to see chains and whether they want to see small business. That said, I mean, I'm obviously a very big supporter of small business. I like to know the people that own the businesses, I spend a lot of time at them. I think one of the, I went, I was at the small, the town hall about small businesses. There was a lot of interesting information. There's a lot of inaccurate information that really makes it hard as a small business person, having lived all of this. How do I answer this? It's challenging and I think Athens being small is one of our strongest points, but we need our citizens to support that. That is one of the biggest things we've seen over the years. I've watched a lot of people come in with small businesses, but we don't always have enough people to support our small businesses. And that is a challenge for our Athens citizens that I would put out there and have in the past, just to support what you want. You get the community you support. And if you want small businesses, you know, we don't have a lot of control over what a private property does, whether they bring in a chain or a small business, but if you want small businesses, to please go and support them and that's going to help us in the long run.
Ari answers this question next.
Could you repeat the question one time? I agree with Jessica, it can be a difficult question. It's often hard to find balance in these situations. We all love Athens and its small town and the charm that that brings. However, we also need economic vitality and development. And so how do you make sure that Athens maintains this cute quaint small-town charm while trying to bring in prosperity and opportunity to this region? I think it starts with building more affordable housing, be that big complexes, be that accessory dwelling units in someone's backyard or above their garage, making sure that we're not pricing the people that already live here out of their homes, allowing people to not be paying 35% more than the average Ohioan for their mortgage or their rent. That way they have more of that spending money to be able to go support our local small businesses. At the end of the day, ultimately, it comes down to where people want to spend their money. Do they want to spend it at that small business or do they want to go to this larger chain? I know a lot of people that would love to be able to support Kindred more, for example, but financially they just cannot do it. So they're stuck shopping at Walmart, at Kroger, at Aldi.
Yeah, I mean, I think everyone touched on it. So, am I next? Sorry, I jumped in there.
No, actually, it's Beth.
Beth? Good, because I got to think about my answer a bit more anyway.
Well, I really do think you asked an interesting question, Carrie. The balance is a tricky one. I also agree that, to me, it's more of a priority to support our existing locally-owned businesses. I tried to do that personally and I know a lot of people do that, but Ari made a good point. I know, in fact, I even work with some people who would love to support our local businesses, but they can't afford to. So when they go to lunch, they go to Wendy's, they go to Burger King, they go to Sonic, they go to Jimmy John's, and I'm always going to a local restaurant. But we do need, I think there's definitely a sizable component of our community that thinks we need to have an influx of some new money into town too. And so we can't kind of dismiss the possibility of getting some new businesses coming into town, even though we're working to support and protect our existing businesses. And this brings to mind the housing situation again. One of my nightmares as a city council member is the possibility that somebody would be interested in bringing a really good business, what I would call a really good business to Athens. Say it's green manufacturing that won't pollute anything. They would create 30 well-paying jobs, but they want to bring five of their executives. Right now, there aren't even five nice big houses on the market, right? So they might not come, might not create those jobs, but we mainly need to focus on creating quality, senior, affordable housing and housing for people with disabilities.
Now?
Now? Okay. Yeah, I think it is a really difficult thing to challenge. I think one of the things that we, you know, we need, we need to remember that a lot of those businesses like the Wendy's and the Burger Kings also, they, employees there are Athenians. They are important employers in our town as well. And so in many ways, to have a diverse economy, we need to make sure we are a place where it makes sense to set up those kind of businesses too. And I think there are things we could do. I mean, we could, a number of places, like towns, I know a town in Missouri where they do a buy-local program and they do an awful lot to promote, to create greater awareness in the community about local, local businesses. And I think we could do some of those things. I know that things like some of the apps that Ari's mentioning, creating digital directories of local businesses and services and if you wanted to support local things. I think there's things, you know, within tax credits you can do. There are other parts of the country where you can talk about partial property tax rate rebates and things like that in order to encourage more affordable rents in commercial spaces. We also have entrepreneurial programs at OU that we need to encourage many of those folks to stay local and to start businesses here to be employers for the future of Athenians as well.
Thank you, and thank you to members of the media for those questions. I will now begin asking some of the questions from members of the public. And the first question, we'll go first to Ari. Is Athens City putting a tax levy on the primary, on the primary ballot in May 2025? If so, why is this not being talked about with voters? Why do we need an increase? Is Athens City putting a tax levy on the primary ballot in May 2025? If so, why is this not being talked about with voters? Why do we need an increase?
Not too sure that that's anything as candidates we can speak a whole lot to. I mean, clearly the city has. So it's why it's not being talked about with voters and why it's needed?
Yes. Right.
I think a lot of it with why it's not being talked about with voters is people in the community aren't talking about it. It's not necessarily just on the city government to bring something up. I think it's on us to be informed of the issues that are going to be on our own ballots. And I think as far as why the city needs it, I think there's been a little bit of a loss recently, not just with the scam, but in general, as we see prices increasing, that means the city is going to then need more tax revenue in order to keep up with various construction projects, roadwork, sidewalks and everything. And so allowing them to continue doing that.
Beth.
Well, I was at the city council member meeting in which we voted to put this on the ballot. That doesn't mean we're in favor of the increase. It just means we thought the people of Athens should have the chance to decide for themselves. And this is an administration thing, but I can tell you what the administration has been saying about it. Athens, as well as every other city in Ohio, has received some major hits to the budget from the state government. Things that may sound like details, but they really add up. Just one thing, a year or two ago, they said, okay, all of a sudden, the state is no longer going to pay for your cemeteries to be taken care of. You have to. Now we're paying $120,000 a year for that. There's a proposal right now that you may, some of you may want to call your state senator or state representative about this. You probably remember that exciting, exciting fall moment when the citizens of Ohio passed the legalization of recreational marijuana. And part of that bill, part of what was on the ballot that day was the proposal to have the cities in which new dispensaries, marijuana dispensaries were located, to receive one-third of the tax money from it. Well, right now, with the two dispensaries we had, that we have currently in Athens city limits, that equates to about $350,000 a year. The state is proposing to only let us have a third of that for two years and then to take it completely away. And so this tax is an effort to offset some of the damage that the state is doing, but I'll let the administration sell that.
Paul.
Yeah, I mean, I think Beth hit the nail on the head. We are living in a time where, for the past 20 years, the Republican-led administration was We are living in a time where, for the past 20 years, the Republican-led administration in Columbus has basically, in order to cut everyone's income taxes, has decided that cities and municipalities and counties can have less and have to do more with less. And as a result, we've seen a collapse in the quality and efficiency and availability of services and a huge burden put on cities and counties to take up the shortfall. So if you want good police services, you want good fire services, you know, increasingly parts of our state are just not getting enough support from the central government. A huge challenge means that as a result, in southeast Ohio, where we already have a resource shortage, the burden on you, the Athens City taxpayers, is now going to be much higher than it is in other parts of the state. And we do have a shortfall, and I think, you know, these guys were on the city council, and they heard from the administration that it was, you know, a huge amount of the cost of running the city is in the personnel. And if we want to continue maintaining the city at least as it is, there is going to be that ballot. You will, as a citizen, have a chance to vote on it on the 6th of May, and I encourage you, while it might be difficult, I will be voting for it.
Jessica?
A lot of what's been said already is exactly why, changes from the state regarding our funding through the local government funds, through the changes they want to make on cannabis that would, it's taxed at 10%, we're supposed to get 36%, they want to reduce that to 20%, and they want to sunset it completely after five years. Total slap in the face to voters. That is a big loss that, you know, obviously was not already in our budgets, but would have been really helpful for the city. The bond is going to be on the ballot. Council did vote to put it on the ballot. We felt, as, you know, general sense, that it is up to the voters to decide that. We shouldn't decide, yes, we're going to make cuts, you know, they should get a voice in that. This is fiscal responsibility, looking 18 months down the line. Changes that are also, could be coming is the state, it got pushed down for right now, but it will come back, changes to the fire and police pension that will increase, and that will be on the cost of local governments, which is the local citizens. We don't really get, we get less than 5% of property tax in the city, so we don't have a huge tax base outside of income tax and lowering our personnel. So the only way to really offset your costs is to cut things, and that's really not what people want to see. The changes to bonds, where they would like to, the state is trying to take away our ability to keep the taxes lower on municipal bonds so that we can build infrastructure at a reasonable cost, that's being attacked by the state. So there's a lot of reasons that funds are going to come up short in the next 18 months or shorter than we would like, and, yeah. Thank you.
The next question from the public, and it will go first to Beth, is what do you think are the two most important things city council does, and why do you think that?
That's a really good question. Whoever asked that, you stumped me for a second. The two most important things city council does. Well, I think on paper, those things would be, we make laws, we make the laws that govern this community, and we also sometimes approve resolutions if people have a really good idea and a lot of people are behind it. But in my opinion, I think that one of the most important things that city council does is, simple as it sounds, is to have a weekly meeting open to the public. Many of the things that people come to complain to us about are actually handled by the administration, but people come and they yell at us. So, or only a few people yell, but people do yell sometimes in our city council chambers. But people come and express their opinions, and sometimes that leads to really good things getting turned into a resolution that is read at council. Just recently, there was one that I personally found moving, when a large contingency of the trans community came before us and asked us to guarantee that the city of Athens would provide gender-affirming care for people who are trans and/or anyone in the LGBTQIA community. I went home feeling really good that night. I felt that by unanimously passing that resolution, we did something good.
Thank you, Beth. Paul?
This is going to sound like a social studies teacher answer, but I think the two things, one is the city council represents the views of the people of the city, so it's the voice of the, across the, across the city. We have four wards and three at-large positions. So the position that we're all asking you to support us for is an at-large position where we would take in the views of how a policy or an idea would affect everyone across the city, not just the ward in which we live. And I think that's a really critical element of what, of what the city council does. We get that broad view. I think the other key part is oversight of what the city administration is doing. So we keep an eye on what, and ask questions and make sure that what the mayor and his team are doing is exactly what the people of the city want to see done with their resources. And so we are your voice, we are your oversight, and that's, I think, a really critical role of city council. And, yeah.
Jessica?
I think two of the biggest things we do is that we are a conduit from citizens to the administration and to provide research for our citizens and residents with questions. If people have things they don't understand or they want to have more information on, I see it as, you know, my job to reach out to who I know will have those answers, to ask them how it works, to get that information, and then to pass it on to whoever needs that. I think just representing the voices of people as a group is a very big key thing that we do. You can come, and even if it's not something that we can, you know, fix as a city, we can amplify that voice or at least give it a place to go, so it's not just going into the void, so to speak. But mostly, we're here to be the voice of the people and to take concerns, you know, questions, frustrations, whatnot, to hear them and to see what we can do with that to improve the situation.
And Ari?
I think there's a lot the city council is responsible for and is able to accomplish within the city. One of the biggest things is just being advocates for residents of Athens and the city as a whole, be it applying for grants to bring in more funding and opportunity for Athens, or listening to what the needs of the community are, from fixing potholes and sidewalks to making Athens more accessible and a more beautiful place for all of us to live. I think another really important piece of being on city council is being there to listen to what other people are identifying as the needs of theirs, as well as their neighbors, their family. I can talk at you all day about what I think Athens needs, but that's not going to necessarily grasp what other people see as the biggest needs that we are facing currently. And so I think city council is a great way for being able to take, identify all of the needs and put those together to best address all of those.
Thank you. Our next question from the public, as a city council member, on which committee would you like to serve and why? And we begin with Paul.
That's really good. So the committees that I'd be most interested in are those that cover things like the housing issue. I'm really interested in that. It's a key issue for me, so I'm really interested in working on that. I'm also very much interested, so, on some of the public safety committee as well. I think those are really critical. I've got to say, I haven't looked into exactly how the committees are assigned, but I do think, in the past as well, I was the first Athens County broadband coordinator, and so, and in that role, I was, I created a strategy for the county and the city moving forward and how to create better access to broadband. And so that's an area that, on city council, that I'd be really interested to start talking more about. Another area of experience that I have is, in my day job, I work, I run a program for community health workers across the region. And so I think that the challenges we're facing potentially in the future with funding to Medicaid and other programs, I think it's really critical that the city has strong views about how we improve access to health access and with community health workers and other kind of power professionals like that. So that's the kind of areas that I'd be interested in working on.
Jessica?
Excuse me. I'm currently on the planning and development committee and the city and safety services committees, both of which are areas that I have interest in and just enjoy, oddly enough, reading on and learning more about. So I would prefer to continue on those. I'm obviously very open to whatever committee the president of council sees fit to arrange people on, finance and transportation being the other two. Yeah, but those are two of the areas that I've mostly had experience in or interest in.
Ari?
I'm most interested in being on committees for accessibility as well as zoning and housing. You know, it's no secret that Athens can be pretty difficult to navigate if you use any type of mobility device or if you are not 100% able-bodied. Issues such as uneven sidewalks, cracked sidewalks, and unmarked crosswalks and whatnot make it incredibly difficult for people to navigate, not just uptown, but the city as a whole. Additionally, with zoning, that has, zoning has been one of the biggest issues with being able to provide more affordable housing within the city of Athens. So I'd like to be able to focus on that so that we're able to provide more affordable housing options to the residents of Athens.
And Beth?
Well, on city council, I currently serve on the transportation and finance committees, the two that Jessica doesn't, and that was just coincidental. But I was really glad to be able to serve on the transportation committee, partly because I'm a big walker, and I try to interject the perspective of pedestrians and people who ride bikes, as well as just, as Ari said, everyone who uses the sidewalks. When we have sidewalks in poor condition, it definitely affects members of our community who have disabilities, but it also affects parents pushing strollers and older people using walkers and just anyone who doesn't want to trip and fall on their face, which I think is probably all of us. So I'm able to push a little bit sometimes on some of the transportation issues that come before our committee. The finance part, I'm really interested in the city budget and in trying to make it as mean and lean as possible, to assure we're not wasting money, but we are investing money in things that are good for Athens and for our people. And then my, the commission that we're on, because we're all also on a commission, is the environment and sustainability commission. I was on that commission before as the community member, but now I'm the city council rep there, and making our city more sustainable is a passion of mine, and I try to be as sustainable as possible myself.
Thank you. Here's the next question. The deer population in Athens is growing, causing destruction to vegetation and car accidents. What are your plans to address this issue? And we start with Jessica.
So this year, they did open up public property, city-owned property within the city to allow bow hunting only or the culling of deer to try and offset that. And I watched the Parks and Rec meeting last week, and I think there were five that were called through that process. It is very destructive, I do understand it. I live, you know, here on the Near East side, and the number of deer in a city neighborhood is interesting and alarming at the same time. And I don't really know what more we could do, although I think council member Rizner has some really interesting random information on that. If you ever reach out to him, he knows about deer and how culling may or may not actually affect their population. So random information I've also learned from a fellow member.
Ari?
Growing up in the country, I am no stranger to the issues that deer can cause. I remember having to move our vegetable garden into pots on our deck because the deer would not leave it alone. Similar issues in Athens was not something I would have expected before moving here. I agree that the culling program that we recently launched last year in the fall seems like it was mildly successful. I think expanding on that, I think allowing for harvesting of bucks and not just does, though I do know one buck was harvested last year, would also help with this situation. And I think, again, expanding it so that it's a little bit longer of a time that people are able to go out and with the bow hunting would also help to comb more of the deer herd.
Beth?
Well, if any of you have a good idea for how to solve this problem, I think the city would be very open to it, because so far, we're just trying our best. I think that local bow-only hunt, only on certain days, was probably a step in the right direction. It was kind of controversial with some people. A lot of people told me they didn't think we should kill them at all, but more people have told me that they've been eating their gardens, and they have eaten my garden as well. I can't grow a lot of my favorite foods because the deer never let them grow. I only grow hot peppers now and herbs that they won't touch. That's it. And I'm right in town. It's, I don't know, it's really tricky. I know there are lots of people that love seeing them. I like seeing them if I encounter one at a close distance, but because we've gotten rid of their natural predators and because they've moved in herds into town, I do think we may need to expand that hunt a little more and hope to get more than five of them next year, if possible, just so the population doesn't get out of control.
Paul?
Yeah, and I know this is something you're concerned about, Dr. Jelison. I know you've posted pictures of the deer trying to get into the history department. And seeing the deer on the porch of Bentley Annex was quite a strange sight to see. I also, I'm trying to be a gardener and try to grow hydrangeas, and they were, let's just say that the deer did end it that project. I would say, I don't, I think that the deer issue has become on such a scale that I don't know that it's a city issue anymore. And I think that, you know, this is a scenario where, again, the state has cut back on so much of the support that it gives to communities like Athens that the idea that the city council of Athens should be taking this up and dealing with what's a, you know, either ODNR issue or something like that, is really unfair. And another indication of why I think we ultimately do need a change of leadership in Columbus so that communities like ours are not dealing with problems that really aren't ours to deal with. But I do believe, agree, it's an issue beyond gardening, it's also a safety issue, because obviously those herds end up on East State Street and other places, and it causes a danger to traffic and public safety. So, yeah, I think it's going to be a challenge for the city again.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Ari, and the question is, do you feel that there should be stronger regulations on what things can be on front porches and yards in the city of Athens? What actions do you feel should be taken on this issue?
Not too sure what this is addressing, outside of couches, maybe. I do support not having couches on the front porches. I, again, we all love Athens for its beauty, the bricks, the old homes. Athens has always been a very beautiful town. And things cluttering, yards, trash everywhere, old furniture on porches decreases a lot of that beauty that we all fell in love with about Athens. I am for strengthening code enforcement so that we're able to maintain that natural beauty and making sure that they have the resources they do, they need in order to do their job and do it well.
Beth?
Well, it is an interesting question. The only time I remember city council ever legislating about that issue was to ban couches on porches. But I agree that, you know, ours is a really beautiful city, and we have to protect it to keep it that way. But this is sort of like Carrie's, I think it was Carrie's question about balance. There's a balance there in trying to keep our community looking good, but also not infringing on the individual rights of homeowners. And it, I think the line that the city administration has drawn is when things get out of hand, the code enforcement office steps in. But before that, I don't think we want to micromanage people too much, and that we're just really fortunate to have so many really beautiful homes that are well-maintained in the city of Athens.
Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be a fan of putting a couch on a front porch, and I implore anyone who's doing it, you know, think twice. It's not a good use your couch or your front porch. It's not a good use your couch or your front porch. Again, I do think this comes back to a bigger issue about code enforcement in the city. And I do think, I've talked with residents as I go around knocking on doors and a concern that, you know, I was at a West Side Neighborhood Association meeting and someone pointed out that they couldn't understand why they had inadvertently left their trash can out for more than a lot of time and they got a warning and they looked to their left and they looked to the right and they looked at the houses their neighbors are and the mess on the porch and in the front yard, and they didn't see any sign of a warning or any kind of code enforcement of a number of code issues. And so it's sort of the uneven application of code enforcement. And I think that comes down to a number of things. One is the resources available to the code enforcement agency, but also pressure from City Council and the city administration to do more about that kind of thing. And again, you know, that's how I think it's a code enforcement issue that I think we need more of in the city.
Jessica.
So this, I do remember the big scandal of the porch couch is making national media for Athens years and years ago. This is a difficult topic because code has actually reached out to inform council of things in the past where everyone's view is what is too much or shouldn't be on someone's porch is going to vary based on that person. And it's not really a very simple situation for code to call up and say, this is too much, or what you can have in your front porch on your private property. It does become, you know, kind of an individual's right as to what they can and can't have outside of, you know, very clear health and safety violations. This seems like something that could barely be solved for, or by talking with your neighbors more, having communications as to what we, as a neighborhood you find allowable to have on a porch, or what is a reasonable amount. I know we see some lively discussions in Facebook chats about what people are doing in their yard. So maybe that would be a place to start, maybe not the best place to start. But it's not necessarily something that the city code can go in and just dictate. It's very clearly kind of spelled out that there are lines that they cannot cross or that they cannot really enforce without it being discriminatory based on, you know, a variety of items.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Beth, and it is, how good are you at negotiating and compromising with colleagues?
Well, that's a good question. I think I'm pretty good at those things. I mean, I don't know how, I don't know if that's what you want to hear, but yeah, compromise, we, compromise is something we have to do or we do on council on a pretty regular basis. There are seven of us, as was stated earlier, four ward representatives and three at-large city council reps. And we tend to talk a lot in our committee meetings, which not as many people in the public would come to, but that's where we have a lot of discussions. And there's definitely room for individual opinions, but I guess, I guess I, and I don't think any of my other City Council colleagues will take our own opinions to an extreme and really push until there's like discord in the council. That sometimes a little bit of compromise is necessary to come up with a good proposal that best serves the needs of the people of Athens and not our own opinions. And then negotiating, yeah, I'm a good negotiator. I just got a really good deal on a car.
Paul.
I have an eight-year-old and a 12-year-old, so about 75% of my life is negotiation and compromise. No, I think it's really important. I mean, one of the things that I've been really interested in doing since deciding to run for this position is watching the videos of you guys on Monday nights and on the government channel. And it is really great to see how I think the very active and engaged our City Council is. And I think that's a really important part of it. And as Beth pointed out, the committees are really where a lot of the work of the City Council actually gets done, where the policy is shaped. And then, of course, those council, those committee members have to come before the council to secure broader support for the thoughts and ideas that they have put together. And, you know, I am the director of a large nonprofit, that, well, medium-sized nonprofit regional organization. We have, we contract with managed care organizations and we have to negotiate those on a regular basis. And so I have a lot of experience with looking at the fine details and contracting and grant funding and things like that and coming to a solution. So I think that's something I can definitely bring to City Council.
Jessica.
I think I'm pretty good at negotiating and compromising, maybe depending on the situation. But in City Council, I'm very good. I'm also fine with having the discussion and talking through the, you know, what's going on in the situation, bringing, you know, any opinions that I may have or that others that I know may have sent to me or said to me. And I think one of the biggest parts of the compromising in City Council is also being willing to take the loss. And I'm fine with not having a unanimous vote. I think sometimes a goal of unanimous votes isn't really, isn't really of benefit to anyone. I think if someone's just willing to vote, you know, if we all push for unanimous vote, are we really having a real talk or real discussion? And sometimes we're going to disagree, and I think it's fine to disagree. Keeping it civil, I'm fine to take a loss and say, I disagree on that, but I'm going to stand for my vote. And I'm fine with another council member also doing the same. I think we do a pretty good job of trying to work through what is best for the city and what is best for the residents. And because that is the ultimate goal, is to see what we can do best for our area and make sure that we're improving lives and speaking for those who, you know, put their trust in us.
Ari.
Yeah, I think compromise and negotiation is part of most people's just about everyday life, be it professionally at work, negotiating with contractors and people, or be it compromising on decisions we're making. As the Executive Director at UCM, it's pretty common to be talking in large groups about various decisions we're making on both the organization as well as with activism, what direction we're going to go with coalitions. And being able to approach that with a, this is the idea I have, and listening to the ideas of others, engaging in active listening and not being too attached to any idea that you're not able to see another person's point of view and thoughtfully and carefully also consider their perspective in addition to your own. I think it's remembering that everyone is approaching things in good faith and that no one is trying to specifically get under your skin. I think it's, as Jessica said, being willing to take that loss sometimes, knowing when to balance, taking a firm stand on something you really believe in versus when it's time to back down and take that loss.
Thank you all. The next question, for our student renters in Athens, we're often stuck living in houses that aren't up to code. What can council do to keep students and renters safe? And that question goes first to Paul.
I think, you know, as a former student renter in the city, I understand the concerns that student renters have in town. And I do think that this is a part of the overall housing question because right now we have a situation where we have very high enrollment and that puts a huge amount of demand on our housing stock. But if you look at the graduation rates, expected graduation rates in Ohio over the course of the next 10 years, they're declining. And so you're going to see less demand for those rental units. And as a result, the city needs to be forward-thinking about what is going to become of those. But, and how do we keep our, how do we come our student renters safe is, again, is it about effective code enforcement? And it may be that over the course of, one of the questions that City Council can put to the administration about what will they do with the expanded funds that they will get from the tax increase if it passes, I think one of the things we would like to see is increased resources put to effective code enforcement to ensure that if you're renting somewhere in our city, that you should have at least a minimum expectation that that place is habitable and is up to code and is safe. And I don't think that's an unreasonable thing for any renter in the city, especially paying the very high rates that a lot of our renters are paying in the city. So I would be very much a voice for that on City Council.
Yes, Jessica.
I would agree a lot with what Paul just said. As a, having lived, you know, for just a few years a while back in student rentals and now being the parent of a student living in a rental elsewhere, you know, there's a lot of concerns and a lot of things that you want to see your child safe. You know, we want to see our students living safely. Adding a code officer would really, I think, improve the life of our code officers and the ability to do a better, more thorough job in code enforcement. I think that is definitely an area that we could improve as a city. Would be an excellent use of funds to keep that happening. Also, you know, if we were to get more affordable housing, we have some projects coming into the area. It's another thing, the more competition for housing, you know, you're going to have to step it up and you're going to have to clean up your property and you're going to have to make it safe or you're not going to have anyone wanting to live there because they will have an ability to move their, to vote with their feet and to go elsewhere with their dollars. And so it, allowing more infill housing, allowing more affordable housing, working to get that into the area where we can, is one area that we can kind of address some of our less stellar rentals that currently exist.
Ari.
Again, we all fell in love with Athens and the beauty of this town. But now we walk through town or we drive and we see peeling paint, crumbling foundations, roofs that are caving in. Code enforcement will stop by and issue citations, but there's rarely any follow-up. I've seen this in my own life as a renter. I've seen this at UCM when we rented the third-floor apartment out. There was a couple of more minor issues that we did fix, but no one ever followed up to make sure that those things had been taken care of. In order to make Athens a safe place for everyone to live, including the tenants of Athens, we have to make sure that code is well-resourced. Why are they not getting to these homes to make sure that the things are being fixed? Does it mean we need to add an additional code employee or two? If that's the case, then we need to look at the budget and figure out how we can make that happen. As it currently stands, people are living in unsafe and unhealthy conditions every day and we're starting to pay for it as a city.
And Beth.
Yeah, this is another really good question. I think there's far too much substandard housing in Athens and that a lot of students get taken advantage of. It hasn't really been said, but unfortunately, this isn't something City Council can legislate about very much. It's an administration issue and the Code Enforcement Office reports to the mayor. But I, yeah, I mean, I would very much like to see there be another code enforcement officer. I think if that tax levy passes, there'd be a better chance of it, honestly, but I don't know if that's exactly what the administration would do with the extra money that would be generated, the extra revenue that would be generated from that. I think Jessica said something important that I also agree with. If we can get some more affordable housing units built and more senior housing and more housing for people with disabilities, it will create more competition. And that can be powerful in the private world of landlords, a lot of whom know each other and talk to each other. There are also, a few years ago, some of you may recall, there was an effort to get the student housing to be more energy efficient, which saves them money over time. And some landlords were offered money to make their apartments more efficient. Some of them ran with it and did a ton and passed out light bulbs themselves. Others did nothing, right? And if there is a way we could spur those people who aren't doing quite enough to maintain quality housing, I think it would be great. And it's very important.
Thank you, Beth. We have time for one more question from the audience, and Jessica will be the first to answer it. How would being on City Council fit in with the rest of your life? Example, time demands, finance, financial demands, family obligations?
That's a good question. Well, I can say I am, I considered running for council in years past, and when I ran this last session, you know, a year, entered a year and a half ago, it was because I was a new empty nester, no longer had a child in the house, felt like, you know, I had a lot of going on and I had room now to add something else. I like to be busy. And I think it fits pretty well. I have a flexible job in that I can start my day as early as I want. I can kind of move things around as I want, which is definitely very beneficial to a job like this. It allows me time to do research, read up on things, coming through for agendas and whatnot in the afternoons and fit in with the other obligations that I've taken on. But I think I've made the time in my life that this was a good time to do it and I enjoy doing it. So I think it's worked out so well.
Ari.
Anyone that knows me knows I am no stranger to being incredibly busy most of the time. I very much enjoy keeping myself busy and engaged in the community as much as humanly possible. Currently, right now, I am the Executive Director at United Campus Ministry. I absolutely love my job. It keeps me on my toes a bit, but I am incredibly lucky that it offers me a ton of flexibility. While we do have a few programs that have set times that I'm expected to be there for, for the most part, as long as I'm hitting deadlines, my work can be done at any day, any time, and it's not, it doesn't matter when, which leads me with incredible flexibility to attend City Council meetings, to have open office hours for constituents to come see me, to respond to emails as needed and anything else. Additionally, as someone without children or anything like that, I, again, have a great deal of free time that I'm able to spend focusing on the issues of our community.
Beth.
This is also an interesting question. I have a job that's not that flexible. I'm there 8:45 to 5:15 every day and I have a number of community engagements in the evenings. But I'm in my second term on City Council and I have figured out how to make my involvement on council work for me, which is to get up really early in the morning and check my email and do my research at night after my day at work and then my meetings afterward. So I, on a regular basis, get up early and stay up kind of late working to get my, to do the best job I can on City Council. And as someone who doesn't have kids, I think I am able to devote more time to it than I might be able to otherwise. And it's important to me, so I make time for City Council.
And Paul.
Yeah, so, I mean, like, I think everyone here is, we're all busy. I mean, we, I think we're also in a position where we are fortunate that we have, whether it be, you know, an income level or home support, or that we can give our time to kind of public service like this. And so I think when you're in that position, the responsibility sort of falls on you to kind of step up and do that. And so since, you know, the last several years living in Athens here now, you know, I, you know, being part of the Far East Side Neighborhood Association Board, I've been on the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm on the Board of the Athens Ohio Soccer Association, I'm sometime referee on the weekends at soccer games in that, in that adult league. I'm a youth soccer coach. I actually missed the coach meeting for that league to beat tonight, so I have to stop by the front desk and get more information about the session that's coming on. And so I have that, used to being busy like that. I have the time and I have the experience, that kind of outside of work, outside of home commitment, that I will be able to bring that to City Council.
Thank you all for answering these very challenging questions. We'll now move to closing statements, and each of you will have two minutes for your final remarks. And we will begin the closing statements with Ari.
Thank you all. As we've heard tonight, I think there's four wonderful candidates up here. I think all of us are incredibly passionate and care a lot about this city. I think I am able to bring a unique perspective of combining city with local social service and nonprofit agencies and seeing how you can combine that with the work of the community to have successful, wonderful projects, such as the Emergency Warming Center that happened this last winter. this last winter. You know, we all banded together in order to address the needs of our community in the most efficient and effective way we possibly could, and that was a beautiful partnership. I would love to encourage and see more things like that happening. I think additionally, focusing on affordable housing, focusing on making sure that Athens is the most accessible city that we possibly can be, in order to move forward into the future in a positive way. Thank you.
Beth?
Well, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters again for putting this on. It's been another really excellent event, I think, and I really enjoyed the comments of my fellow candidates and getting to know them a little better. And I'd like to thank those of you who came today for sticking around through the whole program. That's also very important and impressive. I think that city council is at an interesting moment right now. After years of there being quite a bit of continuity, there are going to be at least three, possibly new, possibly four new members of council in the next term. The Ward One, which is the west side, will definitely have a new person. Ward Two, which is the south side, will definitely have a new city council member. The president of council, who's not one of the seven but runs every meeting, will definitely be a new person. And there will be at least one, maybe two, new city council at-large members. So I would suggest for your consideration that it would be good if we have a few people who have some experience, to balance with the new ideas and new energy that would come in. As I've mentioned, I believe, I'm in my second term on Athens City Council. I first ran in 2019 for an at-large position. And when I ran that race, I started by meeting individually with the director of every city agency. And I took notes, and I asked them lots of questions about what their department does, what they do, what could be better, what the challenges were, and what was going great. And I feel like that helped me hit the ground running in my first term with a solid understanding of the city, which has only gotten, that understanding has only become deeper over my years of serving on council. And I've been reflecting recently that I think now I am more effective than I ever was before because I have some institutional memory, and I have a better understanding of how the city works and of, you know, potential consequences of different ordinances. And so, I would really appreciate your votes.
Paul?
Yeah, likewise, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters again and Professor Jellison for emceeing the night. I have a pretty short to-do list when I'm on city council. The first would be, do, take up initiatives that would expand access to affordable housing. The second thing would be to support local small businesses. The third thing would be to support community health. I think there are a lot of possible initiatives and challenges coming down the pipeline in that area. And the last thing would be to stand up for our progressive values, to stand up for the things that make Athens such a unique and special place, and I think that's a critical role for the city council coming forward in the next few years. Athens city faces challenging times. We are living nationally in very challenging times. I think we all know that. And I think it's really critical that moving forward, and I think Beth mentioned as well, there is going to be some change on city council. And I think it's really critical that we have steady, engaged leadership from city council at what is a very challenging time. Athens is a special place, and we really need city council to step up and protect that. And so I would really, really, really please on May 6th if I could have your vote, and I would be very proud to represent the whole city at-large on the city council starting from next year.
Jessica?
Thank you. I think I'd first state that I don't think it's often you're on a panel competing with other people where you know all of them and you like all of them, and it's a weird situation. But it's also a very Athens situation. You tend to run into places and you realize you know a lot of the room when you enter it, so it's, you know, one of the best things about Athens that I really enjoy. I feel like I'm really settling into this role. I've enjoyed doing it, and I would really appreciate it continuing to be able to enjoy it. I think I've really learned a lot, and I continue to learn a lot. I really put a lot of time and energy into fully researching, you know, reading, understanding what's going on, and reaching out. Anytime I have a question, I reach out to people and ask, because I think saying "I don't know" is one thing, but finding out the answer is really what we should all be doing. I really believe in becoming really prepared for our meetings and knowing when we come in, you know, what we're talking about and why it's important. And if I don't know something, bringing that up because maybe there's other people that don't know, especially when it comes to the process or how things function within the city, which is very confusing and has a lot of things that aren't really necessarily known. That's it, I think I, I've just interacted a lot over the years in a lot of different capacities, and so I can bring a lot of different perspectives and continue to kind of say, "Well, I had this experience working with this group, and now, you know, this is going to come to a head in Athens." And knowing what we can and can't really get done is really, I think, one of the key ways to continue getting things done, not wasting energy when it's a path we can't necessarily go down, but finding the way to move forward and standing up and, you know, progressive values in Athens are key, and I really enjoy being able to sit up there and acknowledge that and support that, and I think that's really vital to Athens, especially where our state could be heading and some upcoming changes that we all are very well aware of.
Thank you, everyone. Now, if the audience wants to engage, and a round of applause for all four candidates, feel free to do so. Thank you all. I'd like to close this forum by thanking the candidates for their participation in this important democratic process. I would also like to extend our thanks to the City of Athens Government Channel staff, including Ryan Schwartzoff and Jason Dudas for recording this event. This recording will be viewable on the City of Athens YouTube channel and on its Facebook page. The League of Women Voters of Athens County Facebook page will also have this recording, and it will be replayed on the Government channel, which is channel 1024. And finally, I want to thank the people of Athens city for submitting so many thoughtful questions and for joining us to learn more about these candidates. We urge all of you to make a voting plan now. Check your voter registration at voteohio.gov to make sure it is up to date. You can register to vote through April 7th, and early in-person voting at the Athens County Board of Elections located on Court Street next to the courthouse begins on April 8th. And again, another reminder, Election Day for this primary is May 6th. Thank you all, and have a good night.